Board of County Commissioners Board Work Session for Wednesday, August 18, 2021 is 10:07 a.m. My name is Time Answer Chair of the Board. Commissioner and Vice Chair Gary Edwards is participating through a conference call. And Commissioner Carolina Mejia through our Zoom platform. So we have a hybrid meeting here and the public can follow along on our county YouTube channel. We have slated till 11 a.m. to cover the topic of long-term care policy plan. Maria Aponte from our Human Resources Director is with us. And I think we just, this is a follow-up on a previous briefing. And we were waiting for some additional information, which I understand we have now.
Yeah, the last time Maria had a conversation with the board related to the long-term care policy plan, she stated she needed to have some time to research some options for you. In lieu of the legislative action, a tax pay, tax role reduction, payroll reduction to county employees, the legislature enacted this past legislative session. So I know that Maria is going to provide you some perspective. We tried to go with a vendor and unfortunately that didn't materialize the way we wanted to. And here she has to give you another option for you to consider. And you also received an email from the member of the Sheriff's Office yesterday. They please to keep in mind that whatever decisions the board made related to this particular optional plan, they should apply to all county employees, which I believe that is intent of the board. I just want to make sure that I acknowledge receiving that email. And also I believe the board looks at any type of benefits to be county-wide, not just the specific group. That's the context of that. Maria?
Good morning Commissioners and Romero. Just as a quick recap, the Washington State Long-Term Care Program is a state-operated long-term care insurance program that's funded with a 0.58% payroll tax on all employee wages. The employers, as the employer, we must collect these contributions and remit to Washington State Employment Security Department starting January 1st of 2022. The legislation does provide a one-time window to opt out of this tax and waive the right to receive benefits under the state program. This process requires an employee to attest to the Washington State Employment Security Department that they have obtained qualifying private long-term care insurance. And that policy must be active on November 1st. The Employment Security Department will be accepting applications for exemptions for a short period of time, and that window is October 1st of 2021 through December 31st of 2022. So the last time that I presented, I was, let you know that I was looking into an option that was long-term care policy only, not a life insurance with an LTC rider. And so we were working with our broker to try to find options. But unfortunately, there's been such an influx in the market that carriers have stopped providing long-term care-only policies, at least in Washington State. So we weren't able to find that option. But we did research others through, so Gallagher provided us with a number of other options. Staff and I, we listened to presentations on the products. They're all slightly different, but based on our review, we're recommending to enroll with Trustmark Universal based on rates, their underwriting process, participation requirements. I did provide a quick overview. You should have a handout. And I won't go through it. It's fairly lengthy, but I'll highlight some of the features. So the first one, and we received a lot of feedback, this was important to our employees, is that the plan have eligibility for spouses and domestic partners, and this plan does. The underwriting process, there's a few options there. So it'd be fairly simple, but part of the participation requirements is for, to have over around 220 employees that would enroll in this. Then the questions are very simplified. There's only two questions that they would have to answer. And that's helpful because it'll allow more of our employees to actually be eligible for this policy because they won't be providing as much information on medical. Let's see, what else? The state policy doesn't trigger unless you meet three of the assisted daily activities. This policy is just two. And the way it works, the way it was explained to me is that you can look at this policy almost like a bank account. So if you qualify for the long-term, you would start deducting that. So if you needed home care, that would start deducting from the policy. So let's see, what else did I want to share?
If you let me in, I think I'm on Zoom now.
Hang on one second.
I see you.
Okay.
Commissioner Edwards dialed in here.
Can you hear via Zoom? Can you hear us Commissioner Edwards?
Yes, I'm in. Thank you very much.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay, great. So continuing, one of the unfortunate things about the state plan is that you, an employee pays the rate based on how much they earn. And so higher-paid employees will pay more into that state plan, but they won't get commensurate benefits. And so going with Trustmark, they can choose the value of the policy that they want. One thing we will be emphasizing is we don't know what Employment Security will accept as an eligible policy. So what we would recommend is that employees choose a policy that's no less than the $36,500 threshold that the state is providing. And so the Trustmark has anything from $25,000 and up. And so one of the things that will be very helpful is that they haven't developed a very good employee education. And it includes two live webinars, one recorded webinar and a benefit website with information for employees. So that will help us. And so one of the things HR will be doing is getting this communication out. My request today is that you authorize me to submit an enrollment form to Trustmark. And with that, I'm sure there will be some questions that I will try to answer.
Commissioner Mejia?
Yes, my question is in regard to one of the employee questions, which was, you know, having their spouse included. I mean, if, if their spouse is included in this plan, I mean, will that cover like both of them? And will the spouse be able to show at their work that, yes, I'm covered by this person? How would that work?
So the spouse will make a separate application. So our employee will apply and their spouse will apply. And if accepted, then they would just take that to their separate employer? Well, they take it to Employment Security to get their waiver. Employment Security is supposed to issue a letter. And then that's the letter that they take to their employer, just like that's the late letter that our employee would bring to us. And that letter is really important. So employees would want to secure that because anytime they go to another employer, they have to provide that letter.
So, I'm sorry, Maria, I need it. So let's, I'll use Commissioner Menzor because that's, you know, his wife is, is a teacher and, you know, she has, they're reviewing it at school. And let's say she decides, you know, it's more convenient for her to go with Commissioner Menzor's plan and because it's just more beneficial for them. I'm sorry, I'm using Commissioner Menzor. That's the only example I could think of right now. And so would that, I mean, how would that work in sense, Maria?
So how was explained to me is that Commissioner Menzor would put in his application through the Trustmark portal. His wife would submit an application through this Trustmark portal. And they do their underwriting. And if accepted, then she receives her policy, he receives his separate policy. And her policy is what she would use to attest to Employment Security that she has a different carrier and would opt out of the state plan.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Edwards?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me okay?
Perfect.
Maria, how does a person attest to the fact that they have this so that they can opt out? How does that process work?
So Employment Security, that's done through the state agency. They have not issued a lot of information yet, and so that's made this research a bit complicated. But my understanding is that they're supposed to develop a form that then an employee could attest that they have this eligible policy that it's in place as of November 1st or prior. And then employment, so they have, our employees have to do that between October 1st and December 31st. It's also not clear. I'm assuming that they will receive tens of thousands possibly of exemptions, and that could take a bit of a while for them to issue that.
Well, how would we prevent our financial people from taking money out of our account to send to the state if they haven't got the process finished? I guess that'd be my next question.
That is one of the problems that I see with how the state has rolled this out. They've, they've provided such a short window of time. And so let's say I submit my attestation and January 1st of next year comes around and I don't have my letter, payroll does have to collect that tax to remit that to the state. And my understanding is that we remit that on a quarterly basis.
So there's a lot of unknowns yet for, for all parties, it sounds like. Do we, do we, at the time we attest, do we submit a insurance carrier's name and policy number? Do you know anything about that yet?
Again, not that I've seen. I would assume that they would want that information. But Employment Security, just they have not provided that information. I went onto the website last week and I hadn't seen anything that was updated. I was also researching like what is a qualifying plan? The Office of the Insurance Commissioner has a list of policy, the carriers. Trustmark is on that, so that's good. Again, I think about like, if somebody were only to purchase a $25,000 policy and they submit that to the state, we don't know if the state would consider $25,000 adequate because that's less than what the state is mandating. Therefore, I would encourage employees to purchase a policy that is not less than the $36,500, just being very conservative on that, on that side.
But once, once an employee does that purchase and submits, there is no requirement that they continue the policy, is there at that point?
That's one of the loopholes that I've heard about, that there's, you can purchase your policy, have it in place for a short period of time. I think that was also a factor for some of the carriers that were offering like the long-term care policy only is that they would have this influx and then, you know, come January 1st, everybody would cancel their policies.
Okay, so a lot of unknowns yet, it sounds like. Could, could you explain just a little more? Maybe I was having a hard time hearing, transferring from the phone to Zoom. On, you're asking for the board to give you basically a thumbs up to move forward again on this Trustmark at a certain level. Is that what I understood?
Yes, I'm looking for board authority to enroll the county with Trustmark. Then we can begin the employee education as soon as possible and start the underwriting process. Then employees would have their option of what level of a policy they want. $25,000, $50,000, $80,000, $100,000.
Okay. Now, once we start into this, is there any bid requirements that the county has to participate in and put out an RFP to, you know, like we do on other things? Are you aware of anything there?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Because Commissioner, the bid process would not apply because the county now is spending money on a vendor. This is a vendor who provides benefits to county employees and the employees will have the options to either go with this optional plan or just stay with the state's tax role reduction.
Yeah, okay, that sounds good. I mean, if, if Maria is looking for a thumbs up to move ahead on it, I think time is of the essence to give the employees plenty of time to try and figure out what they're going to do. And I'm a thumbs up on moving forward on that, I think.
Okay, Maria, I have a bunch of questions and hopefully they're short. So I'll just go one, I'll go one at a time and just go through them. So going back to the whole structure of the scheme, I'm forgetting. I think I knew this maybe three months ago and now I've forgotten. What happens to me if I, if I contribute to the state plan, my payroll tax? And then I leave county employment and open my own law firm? What will happen to, do I, do I just lose all the money that I paid and then I have to go out and get my own plan? Or would I continue to pay a tax to the state in my new job that's no longer a county job? Or will I have a benefit that's of any use to me? Or what happens in that case?
Okay, so I will share with you the information from the state in terms of the qualifying events. So it's limited to Washington, first of all, it's limited to Washington state residents. So if you leave county employment and you move and you've paid into it, you know, you pay into it for a couple of years, you would not be able to receive benefits. You're vested in the program if you have a total of 10 years without interruption of five or more consecutive years. Or three years within the last six years from the date of the application that benefits is made. And you must have worked at least 500 hours during each of the 10 years of each of the three years, whichever applies. I think they could have written this more clearly, but this is just straight from the legislation. And so one of the concerns is that the closer a person is to retirement, they may not be able to actually qualify for the plan. And so having your own private plan is more appealing the closer that you are to retirement. You know, if you're 20 years from retirement, it may not be you're young enough. So, does that answer your question? So I think it'll depend individually for you if county employment is the, you know, if you start paying into this while you're a county employee and you leave in the next couple of years and you go into private practice. And my understanding is all employees have to pay into this, but there were a few opt-outs, which I do have here. I can find them. Let's see here. Here are the exceptions. Employees covered by current collective bargaining agreement in effect as of October 2017. So that wouldn't apply to you. Employees that are part of, that are self-employed. So if you went into private practice, you would be exempt from that. And employees of a federally recognized tribe.
Employees subject to a collective bargaining agreement, isn't that like a lot of people?
So our major groups are ASME, our courthouse, Tilly, District Court. Their contracts expire next year. And this year we have the sheriff's deputies, corrections, captains that expire. So they've already asked to bargain some things around this. And so there's more to come on that.
But you, you listed them as an exemption from the, from the law.
2017.
Just while they're, just until the contract is open.
Okay. Okay, so, okay, so Trustmark is the company that the school districts are using as well. So it's not, I guess, surprising to me that that's where you landed. But one thing that they said, I have, you know, my information from them was a few months old. Maybe things have changed. But they were very clear that the minimum, out of the Trustmark plans, the lowest one that would qualify for the state exemption is the $80,000. So they were, you're saying maybe $25,000 plan will qualify. They were saying it would not. So I just, I mean, and.
No, my concern is that $25,000 would not be adequate, that that, the state wouldn't, might not consider that adequate. They gave examples to us. I will clarify, but I was not aware that $80,000 was the minimum that they would allow an employee to purchase.
Well, I don't think, and again, I think what they were saying was, it wasn't that the state said you got to have an $80,000, but based what this, based what the. it wasn't that the state said you gotta have an eighty thousand dollar, but based what this, based what the opt-out criteria were up as applied to what Trustmark offers, it was the eighty thousand dollar one that you got listed here was the minimum one that would check all the boxes. And I don't remember what all those boxes were, but they're basically saying like, figure that you're gonna have to, we're not a hundred percent sure they were saying that, but they said, figure that you're gonna have to purchase that policy to qualify for the opt-out based on the criteria that they were understanding were was necessary. It was one of the things they were sort of saying was a little bit unfair is that the state's criteria for opt-out and I don't remember the all the, like I said, I don't remember all the boxes, but they said the state's criteria for opt-out meant that you'd have to buy quite a bit more insurance to opt out than what the state was offering you. So it wasn't just apples to apples, like meet, it wasn't just like they were saying, here's what we're giving you and if you can meet that, they're like, no, here's what we're giving you. And if you can meet this higher thing, we'll let you opt out. So they were kinda saying it wasn't really fair, but that's what it was, that's what the rules were. And they were saying that the eighty thousand dollar policy was gonna be the minimal one to meet the state's checkboxes for opt-out. So I just want, I mean, I don't know if that's right or wrong, but I wanted to share that because I I remember that very clearly.
Okay, yeah.
I didn't understand about the application window, so I had, so if I wanna opt out, I have to have my policy in place by November first, which basically means it has to be done by October first because in order to be effective November first. But you said I can apply by the end of the year, twenty twenty-two, you said?
That's the application period for seeking an exemption from Employment Security Department. So let's say somebody has a plan that's active right now. Let's say they went out private purchase or or possibly they have a life insurance plan that has uh a rider on it that would qualify for long-term care. On October first, they can start uh the app, the exemption process with the state. And so that exemption uh period is October first through December thirty-first. Um, again, I think the way the legislation laid all this out is is confusing.
But unless you have your plan in place by, you know, even though you might be able to apply after, it's not gonna work if you don't have your plan in place by November fir- after November first.
Right, and that's why, you know, starting this this process so that employees can get their application in um and uh get their uh benefit in place, uh their application approved and in place by I think I hear you saying that it has to be active on October first. Um
Well, that's what they said at the school district. They said that the insurance carriers, Trustmark, let's just say, in order to, in order for them to have you active November first, like you have to start by October first because they will make like your application approval then becomes active on the first day of the following month. So they just wanted to warn you, like, don't roll in on October twenty-fifth and you're gonna get it all done, like you basically need to set a deadline for yourself of October first if you really think you're gonna have an active policy on November first, which will then qualify you for the exem- the exemption.
Okay, no, that makes sense.
Um, and I guess the one thing is like, that I know we talked about it before, but since people may be listening to this for education, I think it's worth talking about the differences between what you said that's not being offered, which is a strict long-term care policy versus what they call a hybrid policy, which has this life insurance component. And exactly what that means for people, cuz the the price of those products, I was gonna be able to get, I priced this all out through the school district and I was gonna be able to get more insurance for less money if I could get just a s- long-term care policy. But then they pulled that back. Mitchell of Omaha was gonna offer it for s- school district and then they said, no, we're not doing it. And now you found the same thing. Um, the Trustmark was gonna offer this additional benefit, but it was gonna cost about double for me on my, you know, based on my parameters. Cuz it depends on your salary, depends on your age, depends on all these factors. So for me, gonna cost about double to get the Trustmark eighty thousand, but it was gonna give me this extra thing which I actually don't need cuz I'm already paying for that extra thing in a separate policy of my own. So this is complete waste of money for me, but it is a uh additional benefit that I think people need to understand what they're getting when they do this hybrid version versus a straight long-term care. Can you explain that?
I'm out, I'll do my best to try to explain that. So uh the employee is purchasing a life insurance with a rider and basically what the the rider is is additional coverage. And in this case, it's additional coverage for long-term care. So if I purchase an eighty thousand dollar policy and in the future I become disabled and I need to go into some kind of a a facility and that facility is five thousand dollars a month, um, that five thousand dollars comes from my eighty thousand dollar uh policy. And so um how it was explained is like, you start looking at that as like a a bank account, a savings account. So every time I write a check for five thousand dollars, it deducts from my life insurance policy. Um, and so if I need it for the extent of the eighty thousand dollars, or if, let's say I expended down to fifty thousand dollars, then I die, then uh my spouse will get the fifty thousand dollars, not the eighty thousand dollars from that life insurance policy.
Right, yeah, so I guess the, and you're you're reminding me of what the nuance was. So the nuance was that if if you don't, cuz it's a gamble, like the long-term care policy is just a gamble, if you don't, you may not need it. But this, this is like a little bit of, you know, you're paying a lot, quite a bit more money, but you have the protection that if you don't need long-term care, then it becomes a death benefit to your family. So you're not, you're not technically losing the money just because your situation didn't require long-term care.
Correct.
But you pay more for that, so.
You do pay more for that. Um and I forget what the percentage of of people that, well, actually, you know, we're living longer and so, you know, at ninety, you might need some of this assistance and it'd be great to have this policy in place. Um Yeah, so, does that answer your question?
Uh, yeah, I think so. I just want people, I wanted to remind myself and have everyone be clear that, you know, you're gonna pay more for this than what like, if you do a calculation of the state's payroll tax, you know, you're gonna pay more for this Trustmark policy, but you're gonna get guaranteed money at least to your family when you die, whereas the state's plan is structured as a very small and purely long-term care. So if you don't need long-term care, you will get nothing for the tax that you paid in.
Right, and so in that point five eight percent can go up. Um once you purchase this policy, that that's locked in. And so really for our our younger employees, it's probably a a much better deal to get something locked in at, you know, let's say fifty dollars a month. Um, for as long as you keep the the policy, because it's not guaranteed that the state won't go up. Um, and the other benefit is this policy is portable, so if you retire outside of Washington state, you still can receive your benefits, whereas the state, you won't receive that benefit. You'll have paid into it for for zero, you know, you you get nothing back in return.
Okay, um, based on all that, commissioners, any other questions for Maria? Oh, county manager has something. Go ahead, Romero. Then we'll go to the commissioner.
Hey Maria, I don't know if you you if you have um an answer to this, but you provided a an illustration on page two on this table.
Yes.
So um if I read correctly, let's say you have the tobacco and non-tobacco, it's concentrated just on the eighty thousand. Yeah, I'm not a smoker, so the non-tobacco will apply for me. So all those premiums, I understand that it's just an illustration, only buys eighty thousand dollars of benefits?
Uh, with the long-term care.
Yeah.
And I think that's what Commissioner Menzer was saying. You pay more for this cuz you're getting this additional protection.
Right, and and those are monthly rates. I assume.
That's my, that's my understanding. It's monthly.
Yep, that's what it is.
That's probably two times more than I could, I I go, I mean, for, you know, looking at uh access and life insurance for eighty thousand dollars at that cost, that is a, that is a high bar. Twice as much what I will be deducted under this state plan, but.
Correct, yeah, it's about twice as much. And it's um, well, it depends on your, what your salary is, cuz like I say, the state plan is based on your percentage of your income for the same product, so the lower you are on the salary scale, the more the state plan becomes more of a reasonable um more a reasonable purchase. The higher you are on the salary scale, it becomes not as um good of value, just for you as an individual.
Correct.
Commissioners, questions for Maria uh before we?
Edwards here. No, I have no more questions.
Okay, Commissioner Mihia?
No, uh, no more questions, just still trying, I feel like, to wrap my head around this.
I wish we had more options for our employees, but it sounds like this is the one that we can offer and I certainly wanna at least give people the option. Because you can't even do this without a group um you know, being able to pool applications, so we we need to, we need to do this for our employees out of memo.
Yeah, and some of the other options we looked at um actually were more expensive. Um, and some of the, if it was less expensive, you, you know, you were looking at a a really low policy, you know, ten, twelve thousand dollars, which I don't think would be adequate for. I would guess that would not be adequate to get exempted from the state um plan.
Oh, so you know, the, Maria, I don't know if you have this handy, but I remember that the thing that, I'm I'm trying to remember the discussion at the school district, the thing about um what's gonna qualify for the exemption, you know, if it's an alternative plan, it really wasn't focused on the number of dollars, cuz you know, the state's whatever, thirty-six or whatever. It was focused on two, I think it was focused on the duration, like it had to they were saying that the state was requiring two years' worth of like up to two years' worth. And they considered thirty-six thousand to be one year's worth or something, so two years' worth was seventy-two, so eighty is the lowest one that met that threshold from Trustmark. I think that was the that was what they explained. And I don't know why the state's requiring, only giving us one year, but requiring us to get two years to opt out. I mean, that was the whole thing that like, didn't seem to make sense, but that's what they were saying. It had to do with the duration of benefits.
Okay, interesting. I'd have to ask that question. And it wasn't, at least I didn't understand that, but it's um
Maybe it was evolving guidance, but I guess I would ask you to take a look, and if you learn that that to be true, you may wanna just let, you know, let employees know that, hey, you're not don't go, don't go for this twenty-five thousand cuz you're not gonna get approved for the exemption. We don't want that situation.
Okay, yeah, I'll be sure to note that down and take a look at that.
Okay, three thumbs up from commissioners is what I think I'm hearing. Gary said yes, um Commissioner Mihia?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, then, with that, I will submit the enrollment form today and start to get the employee education materials out. Appreciate your time today. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria.
Thank you, Maria. We're adjourned.
Hey, uh Romero, are we gonna be on at noon then?
Yes, sir.